Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 5:02 PM. And if everyone can stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I would like to welcome and thank everyone for coming this evening. It's nice to have a full house. Very nice. Thanks for coming, everybody. All right, the first thing we need to do is to approve the meeting agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. 5.0 is community comments. Community comments is an opportunity for the public to address the support on a school-related item in accordance with the guidelines that are printed at the end of the agenda. The agendas can be found on the table over there. And we do have one person sign up for community comments, and it's Chad Benish from the CCEA Contract Bargaining.
Right here, okay?
Yes, perfect.
Hello.
Hello.
And thanks for all you do for the students and employees of Cook County Schools and for your service to Cook County. My name is Chad Benish, and I teach science at high school. I am also part of the CCEA bargaining team. We are here tonight to show our support for negotiating a contract that both the district and the union can be proud of. We have a dedicated staff who work hard to create the school that our students, staff, and community deserve. This means making sure we have fully licensed teachers in every classroom, including art, music, physical education, and school counselors. We come to Cook County for a reason. We want to live here. I don't have to tell you that living in Cook County is expensive due to our geographical location and the tourist nature of our community. Housing expenses are extremely high. Gas and grocery prices are higher than other communities. And making ends meet challenges everyone. We are concerned with our ability to recruit and retain teachers to come to the county and, at least as in Burnley, to stay in Cook County. Currently, over one-third of our teaching staff are probationary. We believe that by offering staff a contract that's competitive, by accounting for the extraordinary expenses in our community, including health insurance, that we will ensure that we have a fully licensed staff who are able to stay here and become part of our vibrant community. Okay, thank you for working with us to create the schools our students, staff, and community deserve.
Okay, 6.0 is student highlight. Student highlight, Mr. Dor.
Student highlight for today is no one individual, but we have fall sports starting. And so, right now, we have over 80 students participating right now in fall sports. So, between boys and girls cross-country, football, and volleyball, we have over 80 students. And so, that's just in those three athletics events, not counting any activities that'll start when the school year starts. And so, as part of the goals I had in the annual athletic report, our goal is, in the next five years, to get 100%. We want every kid to be a part of at least one activity in the school, so they feel part of the population. And so, right now, we have 80. That's a pretty high number for us. It's higher than last year, and it's most definitely higher than two years ago. So, we're pretty happy in the direction we're moving. And we've got a ways to go, but really good fall. The kids have turned up and really done a nice job, so.
Great. Thank you. Yes, question?
Is it the athletic fees that might be an impediment? Or is it transportation? Or not everyone wants to play football, I get that too, but...
Right.
Do you know what seems to be the major reasons that kids don't go out?
Well, we get into some philosophy there, but I can reassert the position. Like, during the Fall Parents Meeting, I had a slide. And on that slide gives the activity fee schedule. And then, in big bold letters underneath that, if you're free and reduced, it's half. And then, in bigger bold letters underneath that is, if you can't afford for any reason, no student will be denied. So, that was an emphasis. So, I think our parents are pretty aware of that. And I have lots of good relationships with parents, and we have given many scholarships. So, I don't think that's the main impediment. I would, I think transportation most definitely is for the first two weeks, in some cases. That can be an obstacle. But the kids do a lot of good ride sharing. That happens very frequently. But we're talking about, right now, over 55% of our, sorry, I didn't do the math exactly, 50-55% of our student body participates. That's higher than the state average by far. So, really, we have a pretty active student body. Now, there are some societal things that we talk about as athletic directors. We, I just went to a conference in the cities. We are seeing lower numbers statewide and nationwide in all activities. Lots of that has to do with a variety of things, from socioeconomics to the advancement of technology. And so, there are a lot of things that compete with sports. There are more activities now. There are more clubs outside of schools now. And so, I don't know if it's any one thing. But we feel like we're in a good place. We've got a long way to go. Our coaches have put in a lot of hours. We're really proud of the coaches we have. And so, I don't think there's one real good single answer for that.
So, when you're saying 100% participation, that includes, of course, the one I have played, robotics?
Correct.
All of those non...
And that would be a year-round goal. So, it wouldn't be in the fall, in the winter, in the spring. We just want every kid to feel a part of our community. And we think that athletics and activities are extension of the classroom, and that's how we're gonna treat it. And so, we feel that that offers them a unique opportunity to connect with, say, another coach, another mentor, their peers outside of the traditional classrooms.
And do you, do you get many parents that take you up on the, if you can't afford it, just ask?
Yes.
They do?
Yes. I had a number from last year, and I didn't bring it. And then, this year, at the end of the year, I will report how many scholarships we gave and the amount versus free and reduced lunch versus full, and you'll be able to see.
Because I see these participation fees are kind of costly these days. Where if you're in the high school, it's $150, or $125 if you're in the middle school.
Yeah, at our conference, we discuss fees and the impact.
No, I understand that. So, that's why I just wanted to make certain that, that we are catching all the kids. Because this could be a financial, this could be a week's worth of food for families.
For sure. For sure.
How many kids are in there?
Last year, we were down to 16, 17 in the high school. Middle school had more.
So, there's another 16, 17. They're not gonna be in sports, but they're...
No, I understand, but that's part of the whole participation.
You're saying more and more of our student body participating.
And one... Yeah, and knowledgeable, and thorough.
And I'm not just focusing on the traditional team games for us yet. I just want to make certain if kids wanted to, they could. Maybe we should have a taxi bus.
We, we actually did find out this something in a good negative like that. We've been funding, we've been helping kids get to sports camps. And then, we can't do that. And so, we have to, we have to do it a different way. With the new accounting laws that have changed from the state of Minnesota. And so, now, we have to do that differently. We used to be able to take a donation, and if a kid couldn't afford a sports camp, we'd help him get there. We can't do that any longer, so we have to, we have to get more creative.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, 7.0 is the consent agenda. Is there anything from the consent agenda that we would like hold for discussion? Otherwise, there isn't, I need a motion to approve.
I'm gonna go for a consent agenda.
Aye. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. All right, 8.0 is discussion action items. 8.1 is goal support.
That is in your packet. Let me see, some of the items there, similar items from last, so actually, it's the same with summer program. And I have it down there with the felted force, component for education. Not just for our students. Their share, the last meeting, I thought that as well. So, it's being used for our summer program, which is great. And we hold two, increase academic achievement. Shared last time, we are having our summer programs. And then, summer school program, right? All three months of the summer, so take place this month as well. No change there. And then, goal three, we have negotiations going on. finalize the LTFM, and then, using bond funds for building projects. So, not a lot of action that has changed since July.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? So, 8.2, goals, review and discussion.
Ms. Rogers and I had a conversation today at length about this. And this is kind of an area that she has done a lot in her, outside of school board career. And so, we chatted about that, and I'm gonna turn the floor over to Ms. Rogers.
Just like that?
Just like that.
You're on. I'll just start by saying two things. One, I love the mission of the school. And I think it's, should be the basis of everything we do, the decisions that we do. And I love the three goals, actually, that were outlined. One about diversity, one about academic achievement for everybody, and then, the third one about financial stability. I think those are, those are very good goals. And so, I know one of the things that we were asked to do this time is to come with, you know, are these the same goals? Should we have new goals? It's a great question. For instance, I, we were, we were looking, when we were discussing this today, I said, goal number three, you kind of met a lot of the financial goals that you put forward to get things more stable, build up the fund balance. So, should that goal go away? Or should it, should it change? Should it become, how do we make that sustainable, so that we never get in that hole again? You know, that's, that's a kind of a conversation about goals. I, I feel like we have goals, but we don't have a plan. If I wanted to say, if I'm like 30 years old, and I, I'm not, I haven't been for a few years, as a matter of fact, but I made the decision, I want to buy a house. I might say, that's, that's kind of like my mission, I want to buy a house. So, I might have some goals associated with that initially, like improve my credit score, or, you know, save money for a down payment. Those are my goals. But if I just have those as goals, and I don't take specific actions, then how will I know if I'm getting closer to that, to that goal or not? And this is not unlike that. So, if you have a goal of, of, let's say, academic achievement for all students, you know, we can, we can say, well, you know, this happened or that happened in the past. But was that part of a specific project, or an initiative, or, you know, activity that we planned specifically aimed at improving that goal? And I think when you do that, like academic achievement for all students, might be, it might be certain, you know, summer school, okay, if students go to summer school, doesn't help their academic achievement, you know? Do we have a way to measure that? Have we specifically said, well, we know that maybe our third graders are low in math or something? If we do this program, or this activity, or we bring in mentors, can we say at, at some point that that was effective? You know, and, and so, I think, as a board, I would hope that we would take the next step, which is flush that out and say, what are the specific things that we're gonna do that we're gonna try, and we're gonna measure, and we're gonna hopefully move ourselves to those goals, which are all in support of our mission? And I don't necessarily believe that's just a goal responsibility. I think the role of the board is to set out a strategic vision and to set those goals. And then, once we agree, yeah, these are the things we want to concentrate on over the next couple of years, then I think we can turn to the staff, the parents, the community, the administrators, whoever, to the students themselves, and some to the board, and say, all right, what, what ideas do you have? What, what projects do you want to do? What things that you're gonna do? Like, if we had, for instance, a goal about, about supporting our, our teaching staff. I mean, we already have a program in place, QCOM, that does mentoring and other things. Maybe we can use that. Maybe we can leverage that a little more to actually measure our progress on that, as well as look at things like retention. So, that's more or less the nature of the conversation that Dr. Ben and I had this afternoon. I, I think this is a really great start. And I think we can take that kind of next step to, to become more, make it more of a plan, is what I would hope.
And then, we kind of ended our conversation that this is not probably something that will be handled at a board meeting, but more of a setup workshop, could be a half-day, full-day, but it, and it's not a half-hour conversation. Just hearing the topics that, remember, Rogers had brought up. There are some topics that we need to delve into as a board and make determinations, you know, where's the direction of our district, where do we want it to go? And involves some other folks. It's, I mean, for our expectations as well. So, some recommending that we look future here. Hopefully, by the end of September, we can get a date and sometime in September, have a workshop. A nice little piece about that is the last week of August, or typically, when the MCA results come out. So, we'll have some data in the student achievement area that we can look at as well. So, we'll have some more data points. In the meantime, you know, board members, please, if there's areas, hey, I want to really focus in on, on this area, let's make sure that we cover that, and people can come prepared to meet at workshop.
I don't feel like these goals are insufficient as goals, but you want to have it fleshed out more. But it's more, this is something our administration's leadership and the teachers, they know the resources, they know how things work, they know, they know the education. And so, I believe we should turn to them. Because I'm, I don't even know all the acronyms of the wonderful things that we do. But they do. And they know how long it takes, and they, I'm sure they have data to support what works to track. I mean, we have the, oh, I forget what it's called, another acronym. But anyway, we track our kids. We have the tools to help our kids. If they are struggling in reading, they can take these little tests. Oh, you get, you don't understand comprehension, but you do recognize words, but you know, clues as to what they mean. So, what do we have to do? You know? We have that tool, and they come with assessments built into this package thing. And so, I think what you're asking, we have these things. They're just not laid out...
That's right.
On paper, though we have been doing it, teachers and our administration have been doing this for years. Because otherwise...
I'm not disagreeing with you.
No, no, I know, but, but I'm saying, is it the, the role of the board to decide what tools we use?
Yes, it is. We set policy.
That's not what we're saying.
That's not, that's not what I'm saying. I, I'm, what I'm saying is, we set direction of...
We do, we set policy and vision.
Our goals are set.
And then, and then, we ask our community to say, how, how, how are we gonna get there? And let's, let's be specific. And if they need more resources to that, that's our job to provide those resources, to provide feedback, to...
Measurement.
To ma, to measure it, understand it. Did that one work? No, maybe we should try something else. That's our, our job is that, that. But we set, the board, I mean, if you read the very definition of a school board, it's to provide strategic direction.
It is. It is our role.
And then, our goals are up here, and everything leads to that, so when this...
And when they get almost close, we're just gonna raise it a little higher.
Well, and, you know, having their goals be like smart, like we can, you know, specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, time-bound, you know?
See, we know it.
All those things would be helpful, you know? And to maybe improve these. But, and I, you know, I, I agree with what you're saying, like, you know, there's a line that the school board doesn't need to drop below in terms of like, this is how everything's gonna be executed now. You're gonna teach this class, we're gonna do that, and this, whatever. Like, that's not what we're trying to do, that's the administration's job. But I think we should work with them to understand what metrics we need, so that we're satisfied with the goals being met. You know, that's, I think, a big area of improvement, rather than just being like, okay, well, we did these activities, they kind of like support the goal, but like, are those the metrics that we need to feel like we're, we're achieving what we're looking at? So, I would say that would be pretty collaborative. But yeah, and it would be nice if this could become more comprehensive. If our goals from the board level are smart, then all of, you know, the QCOM goal, the goals is, you know, if, as individuals have goals, as they sort of taper out, they are all sort of insubordinate.
Everybody needs to do the...
And they all support that.
Right.
So, I mean, I just think last week, when, or last month, excuse me, when, it all seems like just a week ago, we get old. When Megan Velpi was here reporting on all of the...
AP.
AP.
Advanced class.
Thanks. I, I, yeah, right. And, and I was thinking, that's incredible, right? That's incredible. And she's like, you know, we've got this many more classes, and this many more kids. You know, that, if that had been, say, a strategy at the beginning of the year, we, you know, we'd like to increase it by the number of classes by X, or the number of kids by this, or involve more kids. Those are specific strategies. I mean, she, she did that, and we reported back on it, but it's, it's kind of after the fact. And it could have, maybe we could have provided more resources, or more, you know, there could have been some other piece if it was a more scheduled kind of thinking, where we, where we planned it. I think our teachers do an amazing job of, of doing exactly the things you said. But it would be really great to tie these things together, be able to report back to the community, to be able to honor their stakeholders.
But I absolutely believe that it's administration and the licensed educators who have the answers for how to get wherever we want to go.
Yeah, I'm not saying I want to define the path.
Our job, though, is to set the direction, so that then, they can set goals to get to where we, as a board, see it.
But we need to be able to know what is inobtainable. We don't want to set the goals so high.
We set, we set the vision, the direction.
Yep. Policy and vision. That's us.
Hey, Principal Michael, sorry, those, those, I participated in a strategic planning committee when I was a teacher. And when we sat down to do the strategic planning, the, the mission and goals, or the mission and vision were the center of the topic at that first day. And it was all stakeholders. It was teachers, it was administration, it was community members, it was parents, it was students. And that helped build the transparency that I think you're asking for. You want to know what we are doing intentionally to meet those goals. And I bet every teacher in here could talk about the intentional pieces that we have in our district that are going towards those goals. You know, they could probably talk an hour to each of them if they really wanted to, because they are intentional about what they're doing. But it's the transparency and the clarity that I think that, that Rena, a strategic plan would allow us to see. It's just that vision, and it's a plan, and who's in charge of what, you know? Is it both of our jobs? Is it just my job to make sure that those are getting done? Measuring it and having that time, you know, with the SMARTboard. It's important to have all of that stuff laid out, so we're all working towards that same mission and vision. So, I think we're doing a lot of great things here, but it's the stuff that needs to get down in paper, so it's clear to every stakeholder. And if somebody asks us, what is this, how are you working on the school? You can say, well, we've got that on our website, you can look it up, otherwise, I can talk to it for you, you know?
So, do we have our calendars? Do we...
What we'll do is, I'll have Pam do it all with the board.
Okay.
Set that up, and open that up as a workshop, it's no pain, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Yes. Great. All right, 8.3 is bond update.
So, you have that information. A few things have been going on. We've got some taping done on the building. Obviously, our WILUW project is completed here. Moving down through there, we had some deferred maintenance. So, we ended up working with the folks who did all the tiling. As you can see, some of it here, they were able to get our elementary done. At the last meeting, I thought that that was gonna be something done next spring, but Mr. Nelson worked with them, and they said, yeah, we can, we can make that happen. So, it's happening.
Nice.
Yeah. And so, some of those bills are, you know, North Shore Waste on the dumpsters and things along those lines. This way.
I just have a question. Under, at the very top, $71,107.77 transferred to bus garage project to zero out. So, that means we took it out of security and technology to then...
Yes.
Okay, and then, let's go down to the bus garage. So, that's 71,107.77 plus that $100,000 we transferred early on. So, the bus garage ran over 100...
Yes.
Yep, we knew that.
But we had the funds to slide around. So, by keeping that money out of security, what aren't we getting now, because we had to put it to the bus garage?
I, I think, but those were very loosely defined. Well, you kind of, when we went, we were public for the bond, it was like, here's, here's five, six categories.
Let's put some money in here, we put some money in there. A few of them, we knew pretty close, you know, with, with Ryan. He, he had some pretty good numbers, looking at our WILUW project, the larger private projects, on the science and culinary arts and the WILUW's, we had that. Science, security and technology was a little bit more obscure as far as inputting that down. The BULs, we had that one pretty well nailed, we knew what we were picking at there. A bus garage was one we thought we had nailed, and we ran into Bedrock? Bedrock. Keen to have one on.
No, I've never seen that, Cook County.
So, Lauren, do you know offhand, so it looks like originally, we had $400,000 loosely allocated to security and technology, but it's about 10% of that left over. Do you know if that is, how much of those funds were actually used towards security and technology versus being transferred to accommodate some of the other projects that... Is it just that $71,000 that got moved out of there? Everything else is good use.
That's the only thing I remember going out of there, yep.
For it, okay.
And then, there were some, some other categories that, like guns, for the science and culinary labs and culinary arts. I took some money, it was just easier to pay the bills all associated with science and culinary arts. So, I took some money from FFE and put it into there just to, you know, it was still spent on FF and E type items, but it was just more easier to lump it all together for me.
So, it looks like Tom can't buy any more vehicles.
I didn't say it this time, Mr. ...
At least not, unless we move some monies around.
Thanks, Mr. ...
We need safe vehicles to transfer our children.
Yes.
It's later.
Yes.
Whatever it takes. Yeah. Yeah.
Moving down, FFNE, we're gonna probably have some funds there, so we're gonna need to, we have a little bit filtering done as far as through all the projects, the larger projects, we have a number there, and we'll get together.
And FFNE means furniture fixtures, fixtures and equipment.
Science lab's been taken care of there. Bond report. As I said, we're gonna have an update, a little bit more specific next time, as far as what is remaining, what our plans are.
Any other questions on...
Yes.
Yes.
How much do we spend a year at North Shore Waste for dumpsters, and do we do recycling? We tried that one year.
We have actual, we have a recycling program, we have some, during the school year.
Yes.
We have youth to take care of the recycling.
How well does that work?
Works fairly well, and they're out there weekly. They go into the recycling center? Oh, we go every day to recycle. Oh, it's every day?
And we can see a real reduction in our... And we can see a real reduction in our dumpster cost then?
No, no, I mean, we, we, we do that out on a handle.
I think we use strategy.
Oh, okay.
So do we, are we, are we sending less with them? Yes. So like the bus garage, we backed off how many times a year they come?
Oh, okay.
You know what I mean? So, and we used that four dumpsters around the school and we're down to three. You know, but they still, they still need to come.
How many yards in the dumpster?
There are ten dumpsters. You know, but your, your cafeteria food, they, it sits for two days and we need it to go away.
Yes.
So, so I mean, so they still come a couple of times a week for those three dumpsters.
Since we're on the topic, um, what all are we recycling?
We do materials, glass, aluminum, paper, cardboard, we have typical, I, I'm, we, we try in the cafeteria with the food a little bit to compost, but nobody wants to take ownership of that, so generally that's the worst.
Storms first did happen up there.
Have we had some groups, uh?
As far as, as far as everyday normal recycling, but your fingers and everything, we, we do the best we can.
Sure. What would it take to get a recycling bin here?
So I'm gonna speak in here. Um, in summer, I have written a grant so that we can get some additional bins that are really specific to what can go in there. Um, so that I am waiting to hear back. It probably won't come in until October, whether we received it or not. But it is also to put a committee together so that we can educate our kids and our school community on the best way to recycle and compost. But it'll be pretty specific with it. So I'll hear back in October and I'll report to you then.
And then we did that a few years ago and it ended up being that, you know, Nate, the sodium would spend more time sorting than actually cleaning, so.
Sure.
It turns into as much easier dumping and move on and so, and they will take education.
Sure.
Otherwise we're wasting our resources.
Well, yeah, I mean, it takes education and perhaps resources. But it's just how you wanna approach that, so, but I think that sounds like a great idea to have.
I hope the kids, you know, a committee, like a, a committee of kids will be taking that on, um, so that they can have that ownership to somebody to buy it. And then there's positive peer pressure vehicles with it, and then there's all kinds of things that are benefits to that, so.
They could have competition.
With prizes. Not related prizes. Cause that's the wellness committee. All right, anything else on the bond? Otherwise, we will move on to the eight, uh, eight point four to approve the expenditure revenue report July twenty nineteen.
That is in your packet and we have still from June, is that correct?
Yeah, I ran our first OLS last week, so these numbers now start making sense for the new year. And so you'll probably have two reports next month, one on last year and one on the current year. Still, I'm still doing journal entries to move stuff around and get ready for the other.
Yeah, so if you see, you know, we still have probably some things coming in, but we were ninety-five point six percent of the expenses. You see the revenue came in.
Great.
Increasing the fund revenue.
Yes. Make a motion then.
Make a motion to accept the, uh, expenditure report.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Uh, eight point five, twenty eighteen, nineteen, activities report given by Assistant Principal.
Would you like a, everybody received it, correct? So I don't know what you would like for a summary. I thought I was just open to questions. Basically, the seasons were summarized as kind of coaches gave it to me. Next year we'll have a different format where we'll break down the stats a little bit better. But you have participation numbers there and just brief season recaps and the coaches that were included. Um, next year we'll have all the activities as well and, um, I'm going to measure each year, um, overall participation numbers versus our total student body. And those will be unique numbers, not duplicates, so, um, you won't have three participants if that one participant played, say, three sports or was in two activities. So we won't duplicate numbers. Um, but that report's just a summary of the year. And I was in my first full year as, uh, Activities Director and there are, um, a few changes that will, will be made. We have a new, uh, uh, what's the word? A new way of, uh, judging our coaches or, um, giving them an evaluation. So they, we met this year before the fall sports, all coaches did, all seasons, and went over the evaluation process. So they know what they have and then, um, every head coach will be evaluated and every head coach will be expected to evaluate their assistant coaches, so. I don't know if there's any questions in there that you have, um, but everything in there is pretty self-explanatory.
Yes. The, uh, this is not about this, but about, uh, do we have feeder programs? Do we have our cross-age mentoring? We have high school student basketball players working with middle school stu-, or eighth grade school students on Saturdays like they used to way back when?
Really good question. Um, all of our head coaches and, well, in most sports, not all sports, but, so, one unique thing about living in Grand Marais is if you are the head basketball coach, you're basically running the program from K twelve. So you are establishing the feeder program, you are getting your kids on Saturday mornings. You are making sure you can find a coach that can help them to say a Saturday tournament. You're trying to find your seventh and eighth grade coaches. It's a lot different in a community this size versus, say, say, a large metro area, so, um, basketball's got a great feeder program. The baseball coach obviously works with Little League, T-ball, and the parent pitch and they help put that together. Football has, uh, flag football and then they have, uh, pony league football.
How about volleyball?
Volleyball does. Volleyball starts in fifth grade. Um, they got fifth and sixth grade volleyball and then they got seventh and eighth grade volleyball. And then they have a camp in the summer. She brings up, uh, the head coach from Augsburg and, uh, they started as young as second grade. And so Pam Pusaklup, who is not here tonight, helps with a lot of that. And so lots of those feeder programs we've run through community yet, but our head coaches kind of oversee it. Um, but, but it's run through community education.
So what, what's the process look like for deciding which athletics we're gonna offer and activities? You know, cause there's obviously more that exists than we're doing.
Yeah, we have, uh, every two years we give a student interest survey and students fill that out and we kind of look at the numbers. Um, so for, for instance, I think it was about David Bertrand. Well, we had tennis. We had a group of kids that wanted tennis, so we explored tennis and we had somebody who coached tennis. And so we had that for four or five seasons. Student interest survey came out, we said if we're gonna continue, cause we knew we had a large group graduating. Three kids said, we wanna play tennis. Uh, that's not enough to, to, um, offer a sport, so to speak. One thing that lots of other schools model in, um, is, is a difficult thing to do, but you can dilute yourself here as well. You know, one thing the community has said to us as a school or as a athletic department is you, you have a sport and you wanna be competitive. We don't wanna send a kid out and he gets beat fifty to nothing every night and has no chance of competing. So one of our jobs as a varsity program, not necessarily the youth program, but varsity program is to have competitive athletics. So a school our size can't have fifteen or sixteen sports in a season because you'll have four kids in each one and then you'll take away from one. So we look at the student interest survey, um, we look at costs, expenses, and then we look at facility. One of the things in there I put is a long-run athletic facility plan and, uh, I'm starting to talk to the head coaches about putting something together. Cause right now we have, one thing on my radar, just so I'm a hundred percent transparent with you, is we have a softball team that has to drive downtown to the rec park to practice. And that's all kinds of red flags in my world. And then all their games are there and so they're not even on site. And so one of the long-term goals would be to get softball up here on our campus. And, uh, it's doable, it's just gonna take a lot of work. Uh, and we've had really good discussions about that, so. And then the other thing we're gonna do is we're hoping by the end of the year I'll be able to come and present to you a proposal that, um, we'd like to start an Athletic Hall of Fame and we have people behind it, we have the resources and we have some very prominent donors slash fellow alum that have been here that would be eligible for the Hall of Fame and they're in their seventies and eighties and older and we would like to recognize them, um, obviously with, before, before we can't do it. So, um, so that's something on the horizon as well.
I felt like this was a, a bit more comprehensive. I see the videos on the board and I appreciate your effort and your thoughts and your plans for the future.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Three people like to go on.
Sorry, I, I just didn't even say hello to Ryan or anything and he's here. And so we're gonna go back, take a step backward and, uh, Ryan.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I just thought, um, so, I'm Ryan with Architectural Resources. I think you all know by now, at least you guys up here. Was just up, you know, we're continuing to try and push through getting closeout, which is, most of you have been involved in these projects over the last several years. I understand that seems to be the last and longest part of this whole process is getting these projects closed out. And so, um, we were looking, uh, going back through the science and culinary arts space, there's a couple of things that we've had some hangups with, science equipment, uh, in general, the casework piece of it. Haldeman Homie, who provided that casework to the district, so direct purchases. They've got, uh, texts on staff today and it sounds like probably about half a day tomorrow. Just trying to wrap up the last few items that we had concerns about. Um, there's a couple of things that are kind of warranty work. Um, and so Tom and I did a walkthrough a few weeks ago, put together a list with them and they're here wrapping that work up. Uh, seems to be going very well, just taking a little longer than they had hoped. So that's why it's been going to tomorrow. But that should be squared away by the end of the week, so that should be all good to go before school starts. So just some of the things that, uh, I know, we got a couple of the science teachers here, so some of the hanging things related to the casework and so forth, that should be all squared away. Um, the other hanging item in the science area, um, was some ventilation issues. Uh, there's an additional work that was completed by Jamar. Uh, I think they got it done two weeks ago, um, and the balancer was up, um, to do some adjusting and so forth on the systems. Um, there's still a couple of bugs we gotta work out of that system. Uh, they're scheduled to be up either Monday or Tuesday next week to do that. They had ordered a couple of parts for a couple of the fans and, and order to make some of the adjustments that we need to make. And then we might do some additional insulating of some of the equipment in there. So as we're trying to pick off what we think the issues are, um, and, so it's going well. I think there's definitely a reduction in the noise coming out of the general duct work. And so as you reduce that noise, you're hearing other things. And so we're gonna keep picking away at that here. Um, and Jamar's been a good partner with us on that to try and help get that resolved and, um, they're gonna do a couple of things that we didn't ask him to do. So it's, it's been a positive experience that way. Um, I think that's kind of the last piece of that. We've got, uh, Max Graves been up and done some warranty stuff and whatnot too in those spaces. Um, we'll probably do another walk here. I would say we have, uh, probably another month or so before we need to do that and we'll be into school. But I'd like to kind of give a one-year construction warranty time period, so we'll come up and do a walkthrough of those spaces before that one year is up. Um, and as you all know, they weren't ready for school last fall, so we wanna kind of push it as far out as we can so that we can make sure that things are, um, are good to go. But I think more of that stuff's been taken care of. Um, and if, when we've had issues, they've come out and addressed it, so that's been positive. The ACA roof, uh, that work is completed. Um, and so we had one final, uh, change order for a couple of small unforeseen things that came up during construction. Just the nature of remodel work and so I think there's a, just under six thousand dollars total, so on a half million dollar project, that's pretty good. Everything from my understanding, talking with, um, Sue, is that it's performing as we anticipated, reducing the noise levels and so forth. And so they've had some pretty heavy rains, uh, and they've been able to continue their performances, which was the goal, was to reduce that environmental noise. And so, um, you know, you have a good feeling that it's gonna work, but it's always better when it does, so. So I think as far as I know, that everything there has been good, uh, from Sue's standpoint. She's very happy, so, um, we're just getting the final paperwork done on that. Carl Sanderson, I brought up a package with the final change order for that dollar amount that Dr. Grant was gonna sign. I'll get that squared away. Um, and then we're just waiting, they're waiting on a couple of pieces of paper from subcontractors and that will be closed out, so all progressing well.
So on the noise attenuation thing, is that like, are you guys monitoring decibels and you're trying to get below a threshold or is this like subjective? Like I can hear noise or what does that?
It's a little bit more subjective. Um, there was a lot of air noise coming from the diffusers in the duct work. So what was put in was attenuators, so it's basically a muffler for the duct work. They're about five feet long and it's got some baffles in there just to mix the air up so it didn't sound as loud. You hear a lot less air coming out of the diffusers now, but what you do hear is, is the, um, the VAV box or the controller piece. You're hearing a lot more air noise, not necessarily more air noise in there, but you hear it more than you could before because the rest of it's been quieted down. Um, and then the exhaust fans, many of which we reused in order to try and save money during the project. Um, there's some adjustments that they're gonna make in there to get, um, so a lot are pulling more air than we want them to. And so obviously that creates additional duct noise and so forth. And so, um, Jamar's gonna come up and they're gonna tweak some of the pulleys in there and programming and so forth to try and get those to a better position, so. Some of it's the nature of it's moving air, so there will be a little bit of noise, but I think we've, we've made some good progress. What was the biggest piece of noise original? And, um, we have an option to reduce the noise down in the VAVs. And so I'm working with Jamar to see if we can get them to do for that with no cost to the district.
Do we know, like, do we have like an idea for what success looks like? If anybody's mind.
Sounds like.
Sounds like, yeah.
Sounds like.
I think, I think we have a couple of, we have a couple of staff members that if they have smiles on their faces, that's success.
Okay, okay.
And so.
Well, good.
That, that is the goal. We, you know, I feel like, again, I think what the work, there was some additional work that we asked the district to pay for that would have been an additional cost upfront had we done it. We didn't, it's hard to anticipate sometimes what that noise level is going to be.
Sure.
Um, and some of the adjustments, we're gonna continue to work with, um, Jamar and their subcontractors to make tweaks in the systems because everything's electronic and over my head personally from that standpoint. But I think between that, I think we're going to actually go forward and probably have them insulate those VAVs to help with that piece of the noise. And I think once we get the adjustments made to the exhaust fans, get those insulated, I think we're gonna be, uh, in a position that's gonna hopefully make them happy. The next step beyond that is extreme. It's, I mean, totally different modifications to the system of which a lot of that is existing equipment. So the VAV box didn't move from where it was. And so it was masked by the ceiling system that was in there before. And so, you know, we took ceilings out, so in theory we could put ceilings back, but it's not the ideal solution with those spaces. It made it pretty cramped in there before. So the goal would be is, again, just to get that done here before school starts. And it sounds like they can come and do that insulating as early as, next week as well. Um, and so that should all be squared away before school starts.
Cool.
Any other questions on those projects or?
Not that I don't enjoy seeing you, Ryan, but, uh, I'd like your visits to come to an end so that it's all done.
Right, absolutely.
You know what I mean? I, you know, I really want this to be done, all of it.
Me too.
And so I'm sure a lot of people agree with me. And so I would certainly hope that the vast majority of that is done before our students come in the door.
Should be.
And, uh, anything else will take care of quickly, um, I would hope. And so, um, that is my, uh, one message I'd like to say again.
Yeah. Well, that's not for lack of try, I assure you.
I know, but I'm just saying. I know, but I'm just saying, it's been a long year, it's been a really long time, and it's great, it's beautiful, but I also want it to be what we paid for and what our taxpayers paid for.
Absolutely.
That's important.
Yep, that's right, that's the goal.
Great, anything else from anybody?
I know how hard it is to get a punch list done if your subcontractors come back, particularly when they're taking a long drive up the North Shore and they're this time of year. But Ryan will see to it that they get it.
Yeah, and, and I mean, we are, you know, just for your peace of mind, we are holding money from the contractors as means to make sure that they get back here. And so, funny how quickly they show up and they realize they haven't been paid. And so, I think that, you know, Holman Homie, for example, that's been the big thing. They kept saying, when are we gonna get paid, when are we gonna get paid, Ryan? When you gotta finish the work.
Perfect.
Funny, they showed up.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan, sorry to skip over you.
No, that's okay.
And then you yelled.
I know.
I did, no.
That's not yelling.
All right, 8.6 to approve student handbooks.
Turn that over to the administrators.
Yes.
Major, minor changes that were done to the?
Minor changes.
Yeah, the only changes in the handbook for this year from classes, date changes, that's it. After looking and going through everything, the changes that probably need to be updated and made are large ones. And I think after Megan and I spoke, I don't know if that should be done by two people, I don't think that's... I remember when we redid the, when I was teaching, we redid some of the discipline measures. We made a group of about five or six of us, and then we came to the board. We just wanted more voices, and so, I think, you know, you gotta, you gotta have some teachers in on that conversation, and maybe even a board member, and a little bit of a committee, and then, and then bring you some things for the following year. Because we, we have some bigger issues like vaping, and it'd be nice to look at 10 different policies, and then kind of say, where are we at as a community? Do, do we as a community want to give a kid a ticket? You know, or do we want to set up a program where they gotta go to two weeks of education? I mean, the vaping policies are just vast, that's just one issue. We wanted to have a work session earlier in the year on, you know, we had a circumstance where our Victorian just, it just didn't fit our model that we have, and we need to update some language, and we just wanna make sure that we think that through before we just have a knee-jerk reaction. Do we need a policy change, or is it fine and we made a good decision based on something that was a little? So, there are no major changes to the handbook. We're kind of, it's not broken. There's a couple of policies that we'd like to, moving forward, look at further and, and update. Yeah, and so, that's where we're at. So, I think Megan and I will be trying to put together a, a small team to really look at it and tear everything apart. If anything, I, my big recommendation is, it's becoming a big document to give a kid. And I think maybe we can get creative about our verbiage, what we include and what we can pull out of, what does a kid need when he gets a handbook, so.
And how do we ensure that they're reading that entire document as long as it can get?
Right.
Question? Yeah, how's the no cellphone policy going?
It's just getting better, that's what I would say, from the time that I came to the time that the Y. No, it hasn't, not at home.
I, I think in all honesty, this is how I'd answer this, I think it's a lot better. I think, I've had kids come to me and say, "Thank you," which was shocking to me. Now, is it perfect? No. Do we still have cellphones? Yes. We have a policy where we want them in lockers. So, do we still have kids where you see this in class and the teacher goes, "Am I gonna fight that? Fight that or not?" Are we inconsistent with that? Yes. Is it gonna get better and better with time? I would say yes. I think, I'd say 90% of our students have abided by that thing, and it's changed culture. I honestly believe that. I believe that. When I go to lunchroom and I see kids talking to one another, this thing called conversation, I glow when I see that. You know, when I see a loud lunchroom, I actually don't mind that. It means we have some interaction. And so, is it perfect yet? No, we're one year in. I think it'll get better and better with time. I think our teachers will get more and more comfortable. I think we'll have a little bit more to offer teachers in the way, if this is how we're gonna handle it, we can be a little more concrete, and then, you know, and just every year, we'll evaluate it.
I think the student mindset will continue to change through first year. You want pushback, and has it become, like, my own children are younger, as they grow older, it must be harder what they do.
Well, I just recall when it was, you're closing the campus, but for the seniors, and it's like, I mean, that was, generated a lot of conversation and anxiety, and then, it just happened in, yeah, how's that going?
Was that open lunch?
The closed lunch.
That's imperfect as well. To be honest with you, to be honest with you, only, only had one or two phone calls from community members this year. That's way down, way down. Kids know that it's definitely a privilege they can lose, and so, they kind of respond to that. You know, it's only for seniors right now, and so, they feel a sense of, you know, worth that they can have it. Yeah, I, do I like that a kid can go take his car and run around for 25 minutes? I don't know. Did I have one as a kid? Yeah, so, I mean, I think it's okay.
Okay, there was a, I don't know where my sticky note is, but I read somewhere in here that we have a commons area, possible commons area outside of the gymnasium where kids can go for lunch.
Okay, so there was a very large calling for kids to be able to get up out of the lunchroom, move around, and interact with each other. So, over the summer, Mr. Dore and I have worked it out so that we will have supervision in the hallways and in the gymnasium at this point. Now, it's gonna take some training of our kids, because what do kids want to do when they get into a gym? They wanna run, run, run. And we have to preserve our floors, because we still have sporting events. We have varsity sports in there, our gym students, they have to change into gym shoes. And so, we're gonna have to have some real education pieces and some strict rules when it comes to those gyms because we wanna preserve it. So, at this point, we've shifted some schedules that the teachers don't even know about yet, but it'll benefit our kids because they'll have that time to move. But there was a large calling for it, and, and I respect that. I, I think about kids and having to sit for 30 minutes. It's hard to keep them at the dinner table at home, you know, for 20, 30 minutes. So, it would be difficult when you've got friends going all over. I think it'll reduce the incident rates in the, the lunchtime as well. But supervision is key when it comes to opening up the commons and opening up the gym.
And now, back to the question, where's this outdoor commons area?
Not outdoor, no, so, um, yeah. It's just right on the?
I was so excited about this.
It's outside of the?
Oh, it's on the cafeteria.
So, that hallway and around in the gym. Yep, and if, if there is a teacher that is choosing to take some kids outside for some movement time, they have that opportunity as well. But again, it's under supervision of that teacher. It's not a free for all where we just let kids go outside without supervision, because our kids' safety is important.
We did try to repurpose the courtyard. So, we wanted to put in fencing and laid on a slab, and we wanted to have beanbag toss in there during lunch. You know, you just walk through that door. And that got shot down because there's not two exits.
Safety again, yeah.
That was actually Tom Nelson's ruling, it wasn't mine, so I'd like to make that a public.
Safety first.
Did you step to open to that courtyard, wasn't there? You used to be one of them gathering? When they got rid of it, right?
Yeah, we, we didn't, I mean, that was a long time.
Your predecessor did.
But no, there's, it's not there, and commercial will not allow us to occupy.
What does it take to get a second door?
So, what does it take to get a second door?
Exactly. As far as the student handbooks, any other, anything specific to that? You know, we've got an elementary, and then middle school, high school handbook. But if there's any other comments, then please do leave a question.
And that we approved the student handbook provisions?
A second?
Any other discussion?
I'm just looking forward to seeing the updates next year. I think it'll be, it'll be good.
Allored in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. 8.7 to approve fund transfer from Fund 47 to Fund 7, effective 6/30/2018.
So, this is in the area of debt service. Our OPEV fund, which is no, we exhausted that, there's no one eligible to get funds out of that. And so, my recommendation, um, is that who was that?
Um, our ex auditor, Jennifer.
Yeah.
And she looked it up with me, it was OPEV debt service for bonds that we had to buy for OPEV, which is other social benefits. We, we had the money there, we don't need any to pay anymore on the bonds, so she suggested transferring that into Fund 7.
Can I get what is Fund 7?
Debt service.
Debt service.
Okay.
So, it's debt service for debt service, but it will help reduce our levy by some proportion.
Overall impact of all the taxes.
Okay.
Tax impact, too. Make a motion to approve the transfer?
Hold on a second there. Uh, any other discussion? Allored in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. 8.8 to approve Cook County Community YMCA and ISD 166, Cook County School District Joint Facility Use Agreement. And we received that.
So, this was done through a lot of work, and Board Chair Lund, Lund is on that, myself, Ms. Backlin, and then folks from the Y are a part of that. Mr. Dore, Ms. Myers also are part of reviewing that, and I don't know if, did everyone get the red?
I, I forwarded the red line copy last night to everybody. Dan had asked for it, and I thought that that had gone to everybody. So, I did do the red line version to everybody last night, so you could see.
I opened that, and I, I guess I was expecting it to look really clear what the differences were, and I...
The red line one with the markups?
I didn't have the markups on mine.
Oh, there it is.
I opened the wrong one thinking.
Okay, I'm like, I hope they came across.
I didn't see it properly.
The main changes were on the grid, which would be page two of it, which is the facility structure, equipment, and it lists that. And then, the responsibilities as far as the Cook County YMCA, or ISD 166, or community education, and broken down those three columns. Biggest area of discussion and contention that we can take some agreement on was use of the gym space. And so, that's in there. So, one of the big pieces there is there are occasions where we don't need a gym, and our volleyball team is gone. And so, they need, Mr. Dore has worked with the Y, provided them with our schedule, so they know when the gyms can be open, when we're not gonna be here, because we're not gonna be here for practice. The other would be is when a scenario sets up where we have three gyms, our varsity gym, the elementary gym, and the Y gym. If a gym is to be open, we leave the Y gym open. And so, that was probably the big piece. A lot of the other strike throughs were we changed it to Activities Director, and who was in charge of the scheduling piece as far as there's a, I think a change in the scheduling mechanism or tool of those things, and so, that may interfere.
It says in here about safety working with youth. Do we have a written emergency procedure?
Yes, we have, well, we, every classroom has it, actually, they just set up little red folders. And so, we have a, we have emergency procedures for a variety of things, fire, lockdowns, lock-ins, tornadoes.
Intruders.
Yeah, intruders would be the lockdown piece. And so, that information is shared with the Y as well, because when our alarms go off, it's all one building.
And then, one says all staff will be trained in infant, child, and adult CPR, AED, and first aid. Are our teachers all trained?
They get refreshers every summer years, because I think that they are good for three years.
Our coaches are, every year, they gotta take a refresher. This is staff working with youth. This is not all of our teachers, so not all of our teachers working in our programs where, well, we've referenced this kayak. So, not all of our ISD 166 staff, it's our Cook County Community Ed staff that are working in those programs that have that training. So, it's a little bit more narrowed down, I assume, as that. And so, like mentioned, we have, you know, T-ball, volleyball, basketball, those are those coaches they have.
So, one big thing I see is not here. Where's your financial page? I mean, where's the amount laid out as to what? What, well, on page three, ISD provided services, snow removal. Did we ever figure out, I mean, what is?
That's actually under a whole different agreement.
Okay, that's just a synonym?
There's a, no, there's a whole different committee, because snow removal is, is something for us, this is an agreement for our kayak and building usage. We have a, we have a whole another committee, and we have an agreement with the YMCA, the county, and the school district that's facilities, so that's where.
It is listed in here as a provided services in this contract.
Yeah, so they, but it's handled more specifically in that facilities agreement.
And do I have that?
No, because that's not what is being presented.
Will we get a copy of that at some point?
When we get to that.
Or can I look at it?
Yeah, you can look at it.
Because the, you'll see that the utilities have been removed from this document.
That was put into that document.
So, that has to go with the county document because of the ownership or the, how that's managed, so.
It's not hidden or anything, it's just.
Well, we don't know where it was, that it should be somewhere that people sign the names to. And did we ever succeed in finding out, I think Stacy said that it was supposed to be, we started out with gentlemen, verbal agreements, and like, we're going to do this, and then, well, our kids will get to do this, and be like even.
That's, that's, a lot of that is on that, some of that, I should say, is on that grid.
But, but we're talking, let's go down to money parts of it. Like, are we getting what we're giving a dollar a month for labor and our, I mean, this is a business thing. It's not, let's be just really nice, because it's all our kids. Well, we can't do that, though it'd be really nice, but, but are we getting the use or?
It's, it's a very complex because of all the different facets. All of a sudden, you say this, and this, and this, well, we're getting, we're not getting a good deal, they are. But then, all of a sudden, they, yeah, well, we do this and this, and then, so if you weigh it out.
Well, can we, can we buy it like on paper?
We're working on that, we've been tracking, we got back to the track. I'm pointing to Lori, I know she's tracking, I know Mr. Nelson's tracking, so we're doing.
I'm just very curious about it.
And we do that, and we do, we do, and I don't have it, I have it in my notes, but we do have a, what the Y would rent that gym for. And so, you know what I mean? So, the cost of what that is versus things. And so, yeah, we definitely, we have a spreadsheet, and we have, Lori is tracking that, so we do.
So, then, when you're tracking that and you're not using that gym, and we're scheduled for it, so we don't have to pay for it, that we're not using, right?
We're not paying for it when we do it.
Yeah, we're not.
No, but I mean, it's like, what are the things?
And that's why it's important to keep track of our usage. So, yes, so that is happening. So, we, we do track usage, we do track when Tom's time, when he's there and doing things specific that hasn't, because, you know, we do share the HVAC.
The boiler.
System parts.
System parts. And so, yeah.
Does that, does that usage tracking include the use of the school facilities, like the classrooms and the gyms? Is there like a value side to those items that we're working on?
Um, yes.
We track anything if they're using it, like the summer, for example, they use their preschool rooms.
Yeah, they use preschool.
Yeah. So we're tracking, we keep track of what they're using.
What's the value of a preschool room?
It's.
I don't have those thoughts inside my head. Lori for that's a thing.
Community Ed is still.
Community Ed rental fee, like some of the.
Yeah. Cause that's what this is. This is a community ed. This is not, it's an entity of the school district. So this is, this isn't like Soft Tooth Elementary. This is community ed. So it's actually, it's a designated fund within our budget, which is community ed that is working with the Y. So it's, the event is a little bit.
The district is the physical agent for community education funds?
Yeah.
Well, that was kind of one of the questions I had was the ISD one sixty six and the community ed were broken out on this like three prong like use. Right?
On the band diagram.
Yeah, I guess I didn't quite understand like why they like, community ed was its own entity on here? In terms of the use side?
Uh, and that's because of the fact that we do have our high school program. Um, and during the day, we have use of the pool for swim lessons, if that's on the programs. Uh, we use it for ECFE, for example, goes through community ed. That's a daytime program. But there are times when, um, is it the elementary come down to use the, we use the gym during the day? Only, or is it just the, just the pool?
There's a high school, there's, yeah, elementary have been used.
And then the high schools come down to use the weight room facilities. So during the day, so, so ISD one six six does use the Y facilities for things. After school, it's run through community ed, but that's the Minnesota State High School, they get any more basketball, volleyball. So there, there is some reason why ISD one six six is on the other side. And we're in conjunction for, in addition to community ed.
So is this, um, I know there's a lot of grumblings about like the agreement before and it wasn't clear. It was, yeah, kind of like that was there before. I mean, do we feel like this is cleared up? Is this clear to everybody, like what the agreement is? Is this good enough? Like everybody knows?
Well, here's the deal. Um, with everything, you know, the Y.
Yeah.
The Y premise wasn't to have as many people belong to the Y at the beginning. Although I couldn't, you guys know much better than I do, it ballooned to well over what they thought the potential was. Um, and so they want to do programming. Well, at the same time, we have an agreement in place. We need, uh, the space to do our, our athletic programs, our volleyball, our basketball and such. And so that's, that's where some of the headbutting, if you're confident, is coming into play was, hey, we need, you know, speaking if I was the Y, we need space because we want to run programming if it's gymnastics or they want to run their own basketball program or whatever it happens to be. At the same time, we've already had an agreement. The reason we moved forward with the whole agreement to do the Y in the first place was we still have our gym space for our athletic programs. And so that's still, that's in, that was the big piece.
It was. And so, yes. And so we worked the Y side group, which is, you know, admin from Y and the school. And so that's where the language that you'll see under the gym, that was the compromise that we came to agreement on. And so, yes, I would say that, um, I do think this clears up, you know, some of that, like writing, you know, getting some of the stuff on paper. And we're also working on a kind of a working document that's, you know, a, you know, procedures kind of a thing. That doesn't have to get board approved, but it's kind of one of those like aside documents where, you know, this is what we do in this situation. And the Y has their part of it and we're going to have, um, our part of it, just to make these things more clear. Um, but I do think this is, um, you know, we look at this agreement every two years. And so, um, you know, just to make sure those lines of communication stay open. And so I do think this, um, clears up that. And this, you know, if this is approved, this will then go to the Y Advisory Council on actually Monday for them to vote on and for them to approve. Cause both boards have to approve this.
Does this have to be every two years or could it be, if there was, if there's a need, we will address it more.
Oh, yeah.
Into.
Yes, yes. Well, like I said, the Y SAT group meets monthly. And so, um, that's, you know, dealing with things that come up. And so, but agreement wise, I mean, if something came up, you know, we could revisit the, um, agreements sooner, but.
Some sort of fascinating because I, you know, as you put the different issues together, the Y was made in two thousand thirteen for about five hundred members. And they ended up having more than doubled that over a thousand and now it's something close to two thousand. Interesting, the need there, but that, as we wondered, we lost our phase.
It goes back to the very beginning with, with voters, what the voters thought they were voting for. And.
That's outside of us.
That's outside of us. And so, yeah.
Well, and there's also some sort of reciprocity that the Y has with other YMCA's. And then like people that are in town for the summer can come use the facility on some day pass or something. So it's certainly like, it's not just like Cook County membership.
They also do the free Fridays for everybody. Maybe that's something that's somewhat recently addressed.
Yeah.
Yeah. For community members to have the option.
I've heard that, yeah.
Um, okay. Any other question? Sorry. Any other questions specific to this agreement? Otherwise, um, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the joint, uh, the community ed or YMCA and the schools joint facility use agreement.
I'll second that. Okay. Any other discussion?
I just want to, I would just very much want to see the, the financial when you get that report. I don't need a copy of it. I just want to look at it.
Okay. I'll update it at some point.
Yeah.
Perfect. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. The kayak, it was supposed to be listed separately. So, um, can I add it to our agenda or not? Or do we have to wait? Okay. So also in your, um, board packet, um, and this was an oversight. I apologize. I did not catch this on the agenda. Um, you will see as one of our attachments, it's called the Inter-Agency Memorandum Agreement twenty nineteen. And if you open that up, it's the Cook County Youth Agency Coalition Kayak. It's a two-page, two-pager. This was supposed to be listed separately because this is, um, separately from the user, the facility use agreement. So that we just approved the facility use agreement. This is specific, um, community education and the Cook County YMCA. And so this lays out just, um, services, program, programming and things. And so, um, it's a pretty brief document that we, we did. This was set up, um, just to lay out that relationship between the Y and community ed. And so we do approve this as a separate document. Um, it also talks about a joint budget and, uh, payment. That's on here. So that's listed on here. And so if, I would like to add this to our agenda for approval. If we could, I could do an eight point eight.
Or eight point one one?
Eight point.
Do you want to just add it as a?
One, one as an item.
I make a motion to add the kayak agreement as to amend the agenda to eight eleven.
Carry. Thanks. All right. And so I, I hope you had, it was included in the packets. I hope everyone looked at it. Um, any questions on this kayak?
How much money does community ed get every year from the state?
Should we, we have a motion and a second on the table.
Yep. Discussion.
Well, this is just to add items.
Just to add. Yes.
Your discussion item is on when we get to that.
Okay.
Oh.
All right. Um, all those.
When we get.
All those in favor to add the eight point one one to add the kayak agreement to the agenda, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. All right. Motion carries. All right. Deb, your question?
How much does, uh, community ed get from the state each year?
Hold on. Ms. Backlin.
So I'm looking at the, the expenditure revenue report because that basically has a budget on it and has it listed in community education as a whole. Um, revenue is budgeted at a hundred eighty nine thousand. Currently, we only have a hundred and eighty three thousand received. Which has been better than other years. And it's not just from the state. They would get it from tachytonite, like bonds and some other things, tachytonite production.
Yeah, we get the tachytonite bond that is specific for community education. So that helps once again, it's taxpayer relief. And that typically covers any levy amount that we're going to do for community ed. So a lot of times when you look at, when you, when the board approves a levy in December, you'll see, you look at community ed, it'll probably be zero. Because of the fact that it was offset because of our tachytonite bond.
Okay, thanks.
And those financials are also gone over at the Y SAT meetings. So then the YMCA provides, um, because we, you know, those cooperative programs that we work together on. Um, so then they provide the financials for that. They have their finance person and we have Lori involved on those things. Should we do those?
We do a lot of, uh, grant ready as well. We get a grant from, typically we get a grant from Cook County. We've been fortunate to receive that for a number of years. Uh, that helps with scholarships in the summer for youth to, uh, have the, um, all-stars.
For youth.
Yeah. So that's been great. And we get some, we've gotten grants through the Marshall Collaborative for a variety of things that we do in conjunction with the Y for, for youth as well. Those are the ones.
I use some community ed, I work grants all the time. So, yeah, the Northland Foundation is a big.
That's another big one.
Place to work.
Yeah. Sort of a separate follow-up question. So community ed is operated under the school, but under different guidelines. So we discussed last, um, last meeting about hiring and that people, teachers under community ed are not expected to have the same requirements as those.
So, yeah, different requirements for preschool teacher.
Would be the same for ECFE though as well, right?
Uh, ECFE, uh, has a specific license to the state.
But preschool does not? The state still has guidelines that go along with each of the positions and how you need to meet the guidelines that they have with licensure. And so would it be CEFE position, they do require a bachelor's degree? Um, or preschool, any preschool position that is receiving funds from the state must have a bachelor's degree. If it is a three-year-old preschool program, it does not need to have a bachelor's. It can have a child development associate's degree.
So you need to have, so the bachelor's degree, you put a student with a tier one license unless they have an, an actual ECFE license.
Yeah, and it's confusing. And so when they provide us with flow charts and how, you know, we can look at it and decide, okay, this is the position, this is what it needs. Um, it depends on how, who they serve and how much they're in the classroom and where they're at, where they're located, with what kids they're working with. But the state is good about creating that for the tiered system. They have a flow chart for that. And they also have the guidelines that go along with preschool, early childhood.
Should we get more applications for preschool? You just hold on. I've got that in my principal's.
Oh, hold on.
All right. So kayak. Kayak, we're talking about the kayak. So we've moved to eight, eight point one one.
It hasn't been, uh, moved to second, which is talking.
We, you're right. So we approved to add it to the agenda and then I let, uh, Deb ask her a question about that financial piece of it. So, um, we can either, uh, continue on with eight eleven or we can jump back to, um, eight point eight, point nine.
So is this, is this a new agreement? Or is it, how's it, has it been modified in some way other than the signature document?
Teeny tiny differences.
It, it has been the same agreement as long as I've been.
Have you been any problems with that agreement?
No.
I make a motion that we accept the Cook County, or the kayak agreement.
The Inter-Agency Memorandum, Memorandum of Agreement.
What she said.
Agency Coalition. And I'll second it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay.
So now.
Motion carries. And now we will jump back to eight point nine to approve Teamsters General Local Union Number Three Forty Six Contract, which consists of students, bus drivers, cooks, and administrative assistants.
Will we provide a contract?
I, I don't.
We're costing.
I'm costing. So we just.
You received the, the updated, uh, changes.
We received the changes, but we didn't receive the document in its entirety.
Oh, correct. It's like one page.
Yes. So, yes, we did receive that, the, the specifics. Um.
So the specifics are, one point seven five, it's a three-year contract, one point seven five increase each year. Um, one of the big things that's in majority of contracts that we're going to be looking at is the board with the fair share on it. So we discussed that and agreed to language being stricken that it was in the contract. So that is a little longer there. Um, going through, let's see, which one are we talking about? First one is.
Teamsters General Local Union. Students, bus drivers, cooks, and.
Yeah, just to make sure we don't break. So we had fair share, some other language items. Uh, there are a couple of other language items that needed to be, um, reworded or adjusted based on, nobody met those, um, areas. And some of the area, uh, some of the, um, contract language. And so those things were taken out. Uh, one of the things that was added, oh, that was a professional's. From the same folder here. Sorry about that. Uh, new language is we did some definitions as far as, uh, individuals, uh, as far as who contacts who for substitutes. There was some whole language that was in there as far as how it was being operated. So we cleared that up. Um, there was a holiday change, uh, for one of the particular sections. Those are the big items there that they had brought forward. Otherwise, like I said, a lot of it was, um, just corrections on language that was either outdated or referenced the prior contract. Uh, the big piece there was, as I mentioned, let's see, I gave you that. It was a one point seven five for all the years, right? No, two and a quarter. We said one seven five all the years. Two and a quarter for that group, the other group. Two and a quarter for that group, the other group. Another piece, uh, any overtime needs to be approved by the supervisor. So for example, if it's custodian, a bus driver, if they were gonna have to go through administration. Clerical would have to go through administrators. That was another piece that we talked about as well. It went well, we're doing two sessions.
I make a motion to approve the Teamsters General Local Union Number Three-Forty-Six Contract.
Any other discussion?
Um, I, I mean, I hate to put you on the spot, but I have like a little bit of hesitation, like voting on a contract where I'm just seeing like notes and not actually seeing the contract, um, so.
I also kinda feel like this needs to be.
I'd like to see the contract.
That's fine.
For future reference, if we're gonna vote on them.
We can, we can, we can put these both on, or we can, we can have neither one, we didn't get them from the first one, we can put them out. So we can, you can just, uh, we can approve it in September, that's not.
Well, I'm not, my intention isn't to like derail the progress, it's just more of like a.
Professionalism?
It's our due diligence, right? So that's my immediate thought.
Yeah, you wanna see what it looks like.
My immediate thought is I don't have anything on my, in front of me until eight-point, or ten-point-one, and we've got a few more things on the agenda. Makes me feel like I'm not doing my due diligence. I've seen it because I was part of negotiations, which I think is why Deb and I are more comfortable with others. But if either one of you, I'd be like, I'm not voting on something I haven't seen.
Well.
So do we postpone or table?
Which one is it?
Since we do have a vote. Do we vote no?
You need to. If you postpone, you have to take action later in the meeting. Wait, no, table, we have to take action.
Did Dr. Primal say we can rescind?
You can, we can rescind the motion.
I will rescind my, I will rescind my motion.
Okay.
To approve the general, Teamsters General Local Union Number Three-Forty-Six Contract.
I will rescind tomorrow's.
Okay. Okay.
So you just say no action, please.
Okay.
And the contracts are retroactive, so they'll, yeah. Doesn't change the financials for anyone, they're waiting an extra.
Alright, so we're gonna, so for eight-point-nine, we're gonna get the full contracts and then we'll have that on our agenda in September. And then I'm, I would say that the eight-point-ten, the same, the same thing for the contract, for the paraprofessionals, we will do the same. So I'd like to just reserve, if you don't mind, I'd just like to reserve our discussion till then, rather than discussing it right now. Is that fine with everybody?
Yeah.
So we can just move on? Alright, um, nine-point-zero are personnel items. Nine-point-one to approve full-time Y and C carpoolers, Tim Young. Okay.
I can make a motion to approve the hire of our new LPN.
Okay.
I can second it.
Okay, thank you. So discussion, I don't have, we have nothing.
Yeah, we, they usually get the little sheet and.
We didn't see the sheet here, unless it's in your report.
Or the LPN.
Yes, the LPN.
The LPN.
Are we losing our nurse?
Our LPN, yes.
We have an eye and remember they're moving for their daughters' need.
Oh, yeah.
We have a better vote. So we're losing a family.
Well, Tim has been working in the school, right, as a.
Uh, he was a paraprofessional.
Correct.
Correct. So now he's moved, he's also licensed, he's the LPN, and so he'll be moving that position.
So what is, um, so it's full-time licensed.
LPN, licensed practical nurse.
Yes, same wage as what we offered, we had before.
So that's a role. He is gonna be a full-time, he's gonna be here Monday through Friday.
That's different.
That is different, 'cause we had two nurses here that were taking turns like a two-day and a three-day week. This year, we will have that continuity of the same person every day from when kids, students get here till when students leave.
Do we get a reservation from the other?
Yes, so, well, but it's gonna be kind of a dual role because it's.
When you say the other, what do you?
Are you talking about Allison?
So what, what's happening, just the clear things? So we, we have a resignation that we, as a board, the board already approved from our LPN. What's happened in the interim is that our licensed school nurse is going to be taking a reduction and changing our model. So she will still be overseeing all of our medical plans and whatnot for all of our students and providing the guidance to our LPN. Our LPN, as Ms. Myers just shared, will be here on a full-time status. Our licensed nurse will come in part-time status one day a week, so oversee medical plans and now working with our LPN.
Does that change our total FTE or anything?
It lowers it.
It lowers it. So it works.
Yeah, we actually.
In our financial favor.
Yes.
Because the higher paid is now gonna be less time and the lower paid will be more time.
Correct.
Okay.
But we're not shorting the kids.
No, no, no.
At least have a nurse. And we're lucky to have a nurse here as an example, that has, because our size does not have that, so we're lucky.
Yeah.
We're lucky.
Plus, I would just say, Tim is a great guy.
And he knows our school. He knows our students, he knows our community.
Yeah, we actually, and we're setting up a, kind of a future training plan and the aggravation and such.
Okay, any other discussion, anything else we should be aware of?
We have two great candidates.
Okay. Okay.
In the future, I still love the, like a little synopsis on paper.
Yes, of the wage and the.
Yeah, it's, it's fine, it's not a.
It's not a requirement, but you'll hear about it every time you all get it.
Good, good one. Yes.
Okay, any other discussion?
Time to be informed.
It's awful to make a vote when you don't feel comfortable.
Yeah.
Do we already have a motion?
Yes, we do have a motion, that's what I was gonna say, any other discussion? Okay, um, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Ten-point-zero administrative reports, ten-point-one principals report, highlight item. Excuse me.
I know it says item, but I always look more than one item.
Alright. I do.
Um, so our PM, or our afternoon preschool program, we actually gained at least ten that I have confirmed. Um, a couple of others I'm waiting to hear back on, which will do some shifting with some of our morning as well, so I have to wait until I hear the confirmation of those others before I can make some adjustments with numbers. We just have a lot of students in our preschool programs, which is great. Um, but I did talk to the majority of the families today to verify that they will be participating in our afternoon preschool, and it is a go.
We have consistently had three classes though, right? So the model has changed to accommodate all day.
Correct.
And so rather than.
But when we advertised it at first, we did not say that we had an afternoon section, so that's why we had to reopen this. And I'm just glad that we have families that are.
But we're not surprised because we have consistently had three classes.
Right. And I'll be honest, there's a little bit of a last-minute-ness about this and I, I am uncomfortable with that, you know, like I want to get it all in place. So I'm feeling a little bit uncomfortable with that, but by putting the deadline as today and getting that word out there, we have solidified that and that's a good thing. We now have to go through the interview process for that teacher because I don't feel comfortable just assigning someone. So we will be going through the interview process for the ECFE teacher and for our afternoon preschool teacher as well.
An update, it is officially separate on the, on the website.
Correct, correct.
So when they're, when they are hiring people, they specifically says ECFE.
Yep.
Just an early childhood combo.
Correct. Um, also with Open House, I just wanna invite you guys to Open House, it's on the twenty-eighth, uh, from three-thirty to six-thirty. We have a lot of community partners that will be coming in and having tables set up around our hallways. We'll also be using our beautiful outdoor classroom for the grand opening of the Felvede Forest. Um, also just a little update and some information that I just learned today. Um, I was invited to a Title IX Law Information Conference or Training. And with some of the changes when I was growing up or when it was in place, um, I talked to my mom about this 'cause she's in education and Title IX was giving equal opportunity to females. Now it's a total different, it's making sure that we treat all genders equally and making sure we're giving everybody the just pause or, you know, the, the due diligence of what we need to do with them, in any, in any kind of discriminatory sexual case or a harassment state. So I went to that, it was a great training, and we have an officer here that's been trained, Mr. Dora is actually our Title IX Investigator. And from all the things that I've heard, we've been doing a really good job here. So we can always do better, we can always, you know, investigate more and make sure that we have our partners, including the Violence Prevention Center and other groups that we have as contacts and use them, um, but overall, I would say we are doing a good job in that realm. So, thank you.
Thank you.
What, what time is though?
Three-thirty to six-thirty.
Will there be a training for the new app and how parents use it? That was something that was discussed in the past and wasn't mentioned in, in your advertising yet for Open House. I'm anxiously awaiting.
We will have.
Parents who really knows what they're doing.
Pam and Jill Bowen actually the last two days have really done a lot of work with getting it set up behind the scenes. It will, it will go live for Open House, um, they're going to send us materials, kind of advertising materials, and we'll have a table there, and I've asked Pam if she would stay late that night and be at the Open House. And so she'll be there and be able to walk parents through it, and we'll try to have a table right there at the door to greet people so that they can't miss us. Um, and then what we'll do is I'll, I'll probably write an article for the paper and we'll talk about it, we'll, we're gonna really hit it hard. I just like the way it functions so that parents can get push notifications like any other app and, um, they can sign up for what they wanna get and really personalize it, they can get everything, they can get just food service, they can get just athletics, they can get some changes on the school calendar, um, I just, I'm excited about it. I'm sure there's gonna be a little period of time, you know, where we're gonna have to work a few things out, but Pam and Jill, the last two days have really done a nice job. We had to upload all of our documents onto their site, but really, they take everything else and do it for you. So, um, pretty excited to see what happens.
So we have the running. You're gonna educate me and everybody. She showed me a video today, and she'll just.
Yay!
Probably looking for that. Great, thank you.
Um, one other question. What, what's your, um, address?
My address?
It's on here that we're.
I know, I didn't think, I didn't think we ever got an invite.
We'll send you the invite, 'cause it's gonna be fancier than.
Thanks for the invitation, I don't know.
You should come.
Well, then combine.
It is.
Yes, nor cut.
I think it is.
Thank you.
It's my therapy.
Okay. Alright, good.
Is there a invitation though?
Yes, exactly, that's good to know. Alright, ten-point-two superintendent reports.
Tomorrow I'll be on the radio talking about Mr. Dora's house from three to six.
He's inviting everybody.
How does that sound? High school students will be eggging.
Yeah, yeah.
I actually know that, there's quote-unquote paper in the yard all the time.
Everybody knows where your house is, so kids would, if they wanted to.
So a big fundraiser, uh, Ms. Beck and I participated in that, lots of community participation, I got the whole gold medal on my knee. And we raised seven thousand dollars for the Upeka County at the Big Gulf Fundraiser.
So it was a, it was a kayak fundraiser with the Y and Community Ed and it was a golf scramble tournament thing or whatever. Yeah, Deb's looking at me like, what are you talking about? So I was just trying to kill.
I sent the info out.
I know.
I'm sure you did.
It was a, it was very successful though. And they had the curlers. Yeah, and they had the curlers.
Yeah, the gold medal.
Gold medalists.
We had two of the gold medalists and then somebody from, uh, two thousand and ten as well, and then actually one of the news anchors. The luther was out, so they had those folks. Yes, so they were selling money. Uh, and then the other piece, well, we didn't have the contracts completely, but, um, I don't know, thanks to the board members on the theme, we settled to the contracts already, so we're moving forward there. And working with CCA.
Okay, um, anything else for, any questions for Dr. Primal?
It says that you still have some outstanding positions still, which are still closed now.
Uh, we're, uh, interview Friday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Is that Tuesday or are you interviewing Sunday too?
We were emailed by Pam on a Wednesday once.
Oh, it's Wednesday.
They responded to all of us. We're going, oh, is it Monday, it's Monday.
No, but then it was changed to Tuesday.
Does it change to Tuesday?
Okay.
Well, we still have a special needs teacher is the big, the big position that's open. And when I wrote this, we still hadn't hired a couple of our pairs.
Do you still, do you still need?
Um, I'm gonna have to verify with Pam, but I don't. I, I, we're supposed to, Monday morning at nine AM was the request that we received. That's not correct, Monday morning at nine AM?
I'm gonna have to verify with Pam.
Okay.
Please check your email this weekend, everybody.
Okay.
Alright, please check your email, because, okay. Okay, if, if we don't have anything else, then we need to do, take a, a motion to recess into closed session?
I'll make a motion to recess into closed session. Per Minnesota statute, thirty-one zero three.
I need a second. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, opposed, nay? Alright, and it's six forty-nine, and we're gonna take, we'll take about five minutes for everyone to exit and then we'll start. Recording device, Lori, recording device.